...which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone, and thank you for coming. Roll call please. Thank you. I would like to have the approval of the November 7th council meeting minutes, please.
I would make that motion to approve the November 7th council minutes.
I'll second that.
Roll call please.
Yes.
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 Okay. You have the bills? The bill's in your packet. Does anyone have any questions for Cheryl or the department heads?
These police tattoos, I'm assuming these are for little stick-ons for the kiddies?
I'm assuming.
Yeah. You know, if you're getting them, if you're getting sleeves and stuff, Molly, we're not paying for them. Okay buddy. If nobody had any questions, Mayor, I'd say we pay the bills.
Roll call please.
I'm staying.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Is anyone here for the public hearing to discuss the zoning change at 315 South Maple Street from residential to business? Okay. Consider the hearing of taking place. Jerry Hayes from Defiance County Economic Development, you're up. Good timing.
Thanks Mayor. Came over tonight to talk to you about a proposed company expansion. Gordon Creek Granite, 604 Industrial Drive, has given me an application for an enterprise agreement. Which is to plan the expansion at their facility, which involves a new additional building. Along with some furniture and fixtures and equipment along with that. Specifically Gordon Creek proposes to construct a new building on land owned by them. Investment in the building should be approximately $550,000. And the enterprise shall also invest approximately $205,000 in the shing and footwork and trures and fixtures. Gordon Creek has currently employs 18 persons in the state of Ohio, we call it the city of Hicksville. And Gordon Creek has proposed to create four additional permanent full-time jobs, which would result in $120,000 additional annual payroll. The application for Gordon Creek is requesting a 70% tax exemption on the real property investment alone for a period of 10 years. That fits within the guidelines of the climate study commissioners. This evening I wanted to tell you about that proposed project and ask for your support.
There are four new jobs Jerry, is there a timeframe on how long those jobs will be?
Yes, I think we put in within 24 months. Yes, that's right, 24 months. They previously did have an enterprise agreement on their first building in the industrial park. That was for seven years and I believe that that expired at the end of 2015. So currently they don't have open enterprise agreement. It did perform a degree of ad-hoc.
So what do you need from us? Just information or?
It would please counsel a simple council resolution to support this expansion and a company enterprise agreement would be what I would be interested in.
Need a motion Troy? Okay, I'll make that motion.
Hold on a second.
Roll call please.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Go to the school next?
Yes.
Troy, do you have information on subordination?
Yeah.
Will that be discussed by you later on? Okay, and Jerry, I didn't know if you needed that. Okay. Thank you Jerry. We'll go on then to boards and commissions. You have the park board meeting minutes from November 16th in your packet. And we have Val here from the park board, does anyone have any questions for her? Do you have anything you'd like to say Val? Park look great all summer as usual. The firefighters dependence fund, board secretary.
Yes Mayor. Mick is on that board and of course he's leaving, so if anybody knows of anybody, you don't have to be a council member, you can just be a citizen. If you would like to sit on this board, it's not a very busy or active board. I need somebody to replace Mick. So if you all could think about that and possibly come back with, like I said, it doesn't have to be council, it can be anybody.
There are no meetings or anything with that, it's just tied along with me to fill in the paperwork to send to Columbus. So it won't be a big job for anybody who's a citizen. You want them to get ahold of you then Ron?
That would be wonderful Mayor, that's what Cheryl had indicated to me earlier.
Alright. Council committee reports. Are there any committees that have anything to report?
There'd be the sidewalk committee. I just wanted to make it clear to everybody on the council that the ordinance still is in progress. And we're sending out the letters and we're doing the work. And I understand there's a few on here that don't like it.
You know my feelings on sidewalks.
No I don't.
I've stated it before. When everyone in Hicksville has a sidewalk, and I think you can enforce the ordinance, we have people that don't have one. Personally, I think council should pay for, the city should pay for the sidewalks. Most of the sidewalks are tore up by the trees in the easement area. We got kids running down the street, down here on the fair, that we need to have sidewalks in front of every resident. My own personal feeling.
Do you want them in on Haver Drive and our subdivision also then, because I hear people think that?
And I had mentioned to Mike when we were going to do Haver Drive, that I think the right way to do Haver Drive would have been to do a little, I mean I'm not finding it fall, I'm just saying it'd be nice to have the sidewalks figured in, right in the street and basically, as Ron Beverley has said many times, do it the right way. And it's a good example out in your addition.
But this has been an ordinance for many, many years, and you guys have sat on this committee for how many years and it's stayed the same? It's never changed. I come in, I try to enforce it, I don't have any problems with the people. It's the council members.
Well, I mean that's just my personal take.
Well, why didn't you guys change it?
It always has been my personal take.
Why hasn't it been changed?
Well, we actually put it on a bit of a hold when we knew that all the sewer work was coming up. I mean that's not, that's not the answer you're looking for, I know that, and it's not the 100% correct answer, but and you know my feelings, I think the village should pay for it. And we should get sidewalks where there are none.
And you know they can't.
I don't know why they can't.
They can't. And also, if we can't get people to fix the ones that are broken now, how are you going to get them to put in new sidewalks? You know we're not.
We're not the ones who are passing the paper. That's my view.
And you know they can't.
Well, my problem is then you got people that say that, well, if the village is going to put in those sidewalks, they better pay me for my sidewalks that I put in, because I paid for mine and they shouldn't have to pay for theirs.
And I think you're gonna have that.
I hear that too.
And like I've said from day one, the thing took off, it was wrong when it took off. 20 years ago, whatever it was, 25 years?
You mean when he stopped it?
No, when, when-
When we started fixing our sidewalks in the 90s?
Yes.
You think that was wrong?
The way that we went about it was wrong. But now, if you change it, you're going to end up with what you just spoke about.
Well, I don't know how the village could afford to put in everybody's sidewalks, to put in new sidewalks everywhere. Are we going to assess people on their property taxes for sidewalks?
If you, and you did the books in this town for 40 years, if you think that the village can't afford it, what do you think about the people?
Well, it would just be a matter of, do you want to pay for sewer lines or go and debt for sewer, or do you want to pay for sidewalks and borrow money on all the sewers, I mean, well, we could raise our income taxes.
Then we need to back off of something, and we can't back off of the sewage, so.
Well, I know residents want nice sidewalks to walk on, I know that.
As long as residents are willing to pay for them, that's great.
And I know like in our subdivision, people are just happy walking the way they do. There's no through traffic to get run over with or anything, you know, and they're pretty happy walking in the street and playing in the street. I know Haver Drive, I see kids out there all the time, I'm not saying that's the safe way to- I, I years ago wanted to see a sidewalk put in Spencerville, out Spencerville Road, all the way to Dunnan and Doran's, so that people had a safe route into town in the park, where my kids were walking in the road too. I was willing to do that, but council did not want to pursue sidewalks out Spencerville Road either. You put a bridge in on Defiance Avenue so that the sidewalk could continue out Defiance Avenue.
But the village put a sidewalk in from where that Phillips kid lives, Kevin, cleared past the cemetery, took it up and stopped it right at the creek. And there's a lot of kids in Haver, or Haver addition there. So you know, after they wade to the creek and get up on the sidewalk, and it gives them time to dry out, by the time they get to town.
But on Haver Drive with the ditch, I don't know where he put a sidewalk.
You can't.
No, you can't, but my point was if we would have done it differently, you'd have been able to do that.
Well, we could fund it by a quarter percent income tax.
If that, if that could be made public and we don't get shot, tarred or feathered, then that'd be fine. But I always thought that the sidewalks should have been, should have been done just like the ones at the high school. You hire a contractor to put in a section, then it's uniform, it's, you don't have to worry about where two properties butt up, if the one goes up or the one goes down, whose one up, whose one down? Oh, yes.
So Sheila, the committee wants to come forward with a plan, like have a plan.
Sheila is, and I feel sorry for Sheila because she thinks that she's the new kid on the block and she's not getting any support whatsoever. I'm one of the members, Mick is one of the members. I am for it, the village paying for it, Mick is if they do, he wants paid, Sheila is, for God's sakes, let's just get something done, and we're kind of at a deadlock.
I just want to maintain them, maintain what we got, you guys are putting in new ones, we can't even fix what we have.
A lot of the problems with the sidewalks that were done, weren't done right, and that's the reason that they're cracking. And people that you're probably giving letters to probably put sidewalks in-
20 years ago.
Maybe less than that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, you got some of these, and I've looked at some of the sidewalks in the area and I know some of the people have gotten letters. They might be cracked, they're not uneven, they're not bulging out, they're not big potholes in them or anything, they might be cracked across there. We're not making them repair that crack, right?
The letter says-
I know they're saying that, but are we actually making them, if it's smooth and level but has a crack through it, they could have replaced it, you know. A year ago, a tree didn't do it, natural.
If you look at places where they have raised, a lot of places are where there was a tree, where they've ground, cut the tree out, ground the stump, and the reason is because the roots aren't, that's, that's what causes it.
It probably should have had a lot more discussion before we just went forward to start redoing it. I think we could have prepared the citizens much better than we did. Sheila, I don't know how to fix it. You've heard my opinion over and over and over, ad nauseam, I've said the same thing for 20 years, and you think you didn't get hurt though? I haven't been hurt either for 20 years, because my opinion was, everybody should be in the same boat, everybody should have sidewalks. People getting punished are the ones who have one, and it's a socioeconomic issue, in my opinion, I've said that for 20 years. People who can't afford to live in the subdivisions live in the old sections of town, and those are the sections that need to replace sidewalks every 20 years, that were punished every 20 years, because we can't afford to live somewhere else. I don't think it's fair. I don't know how you do it now, it would be political suicide. You talk about this over and over and over to say, okay, everybody's going to get a brand new sidewalk as of right. You might as well forget ever being a public servant again, because you'll never get elected again. I don't know how you fix it, but I don't think what we've done is fair, I agree with, I concur with Ron, I don't think it was fair 21 or 22 years ago the way it was done, and I think the way we jump back into it now could have been handled a little bit differently. That's all I've got to say.
While we're on the subject, Mr. Figaro, would you like to, you're here about sidewalks, he lives on Canary Street, you want to step up to the podium please, and after, you know, what you've heard, I don't know if you, you can tell us your story.
My name is Anthony Frego, I live at 305 East Public Electric Street. Last year, I had a big overgrown tree up front of the house, which should have been cut down probably 15 years before we cut it down. Well, right there where the tree was, is where my sidewalk heaved up, cracked and broke. And my city utility water meters actually sitting at about a 30 degree angle because of this same tree. The letter that I had got last week, which I have with me, but it says that that's the problem spot in my sidewalk. It wasn't because of negligence of anything as resident or homeowner that created that break. It was actually negligence of down Hicksville not removing that tree and add it for a long time before destroying my sidewalk.
And the tree has been removed?
Tree's been removed. When they brought the stump removed and then, they actually smashed into the sidewalk. You see in about a six foot area, where they just took big gouges on the side of the sidewalk, and the sidewalk was just- I need a new roof this year, I can't afford to pay for the sidewalk too. But it was my negligence of putting up, creating one gap. Letting the money down, I'm going to have a sidewalk repaired, but it wasn't a good thing that I did, that destroyed my sidewalk.
Probably when that is repaired, whether the village repairs it or however, that water shut off, would need to be reset. Probably when you take up the sidewalk, you'd have to cut out all the roots underneath it.
I asked three times and lost a year or two because the tree needed to be taken away, but it just kept going, it didn't take it off the list. And finally, they put it on the list and got it. This tree was at least 15 to 17 feet from the hand when they cut this tree out. There is this one up there, since we went down to the pictures and what, you see what's there, but it was just-
You mean the redwood? The tree was 15 foot down?
You could put three people around that tree and touch it.
That's a redwood, you cut redwood down.
Dead wood, no. Ken, are we going to have to do meter work at that spot anyway, water meter work? You know for sure where he's at, but it sounds like-
Did the city cut it down or did-
Yeah.
Yeah, Tony came to me, Tony and I worked together, and he came to me and he said he had some concerns because some dead limbs were over his home. And he was concerned if the limbs fell off, it was going to hurt his house, so that's when I went to Ken and explained what was going on, and shortly after that, the tree was gone.
You've taken a lot of trees out in the last five years.
Yes it has.
Don't mean it, they're taking them all out.
Well, if they're causing the problem, yeah, chop every one down and I won't replant any. It is a problem here. That's not-
There is a lot, there's a lot of that around town, a lot.
I won't plant anything.
And that was one of the news we were talking about in the last meeting, about the trees, and who should be the one to fix the sidewalk.
I just wanted to come back to you.
I'm glad you did.
To let you know that there's, there's people that can, and there's people that can't. There's people that can step up and there's people that it's not their fault, and there's other situations that add it to the problem with the sidewalks. I don't know about, I'd say the result, but I just wanted to come in and let you know that we're out there to see what we can do.
You realize you have a year, right? Okay. Well, hopefully, we're going to come up with some solution to our sidewalk ordinance.
Can I say this to him? Don't do anything anymore this season, let us, let us try to put something together.
I would suggest that he hold off till spring.
I would suggest that his year starts whenever the decision is made, not a month ago.
You're not fine with that too?
Yeah, but in his case too, I think the committee ought to look at the situation, it's not his fault.
Right, concrete cracks, I don't care if you're the best concrete man in the world, you put it in, it's going to crack. And I know what trees do to them, and I'm on your side. And there's a lot of them throughout this village, and I think we just, we don't want you to do anything contrary to your letter until we can put something together that makes sense to everybody.
Ron, don't you think that, I mean, the trees that are in the easement, if they're causing the trouble, the homeowners should be responsible for that?
Which we would need to rewrite the ordinance for that.
Yes, right.
To make it legal for us to take care of it.
That was my point.
The extent of how far we go with that.
Troy, what's your thought?
I was at the committee meeting when we were talking about that, and I, I mean if the the tree's causing the damage, I don't, I mean you'd have to rewrite the ordinance, but it's a problem, or whatever. It's clear, I mean the question on all those things always comes about is, some of them, it's, I mean, his may very well be obvious as soon as somebody that knows what they're doing goes down and looks at it. And then there may be another one, you could take three or four people that know what they're doing, and two of them might say, oh, I think the tree caused that, and the other two might say something else. That's when you get into the gray area there, that it gets tough.
And we need to establish something so we no longer have gray area.
Well, the other gray area is who owns the trees.
We worked that out.
If it's a city tree that's creating the problem, the city should be responsible, but I don't think there's city trees, don't they can?
Troy sees a little different than me.
You think those are city trees?
We don't pay any property taxes on easement areas. We have a right to go in and dig. Now, Ohio revised code does say, we're responsible if a tree's endangering health or safety, whatever, that we're responsible, which I think-
If it's in the easement area, right. So you get one in front of your house, that's got some dead limbs that are hanging out over the road, the village better be down there cutting it, because it falls on some car when it's going by, we're going to be on the hook. If you get one that's on the other side of the easement area that's hanging over your driveway or whatever, you better be doing something about it, because that's not the village's responsibility.
So see, that's as unfair as the people that have sidewalks, and I, I don't have a tree in my yard anymore, so I'll never have to worry about it. So that's, so I've got an advantage over, you know, say if Mike's got five out in front of his house or home.
I've been cutting them down about as fast as I can, there's one in front of the store.
I'm just saying, when you figure in your cost of doing sidewalks, there's probably a couple hundred of those monster old trees, and you drive around town, we got tons of old trees. It's going to cost quite a bit cutting those all down.
I sent you all an email that I got when I, I emailed Stephanie Miller with Ohio Department of Natural Resources, because she puts on all the tree trimming programs that our guys go to, and tree maintenance, and the Ohio Tree Academies and all this and that, and I think I shared your reply to her that yes, they do have, the Ohio Department of Natural Resources does have some type of plan for the trees you plant in the right way, and how to avoid them heaving up the sidewalks. And I didn't follow up, because I wanted to wait and see how this was going to play out for the committee, but you all got the email and you could also contact Steffi, but she was willing to come here and talk to us about it, how we could prevent trees from heaving up sidewalks. It's too late now on some of them.
It's phase three of everything. I wouldn't worry about planting new ones, we got all the old ones down in the sidewalk.
That's another thing that I never fully understood, and I love to drive down the streets with the tree-lined streets, I love that. But every one of them trees is sitting on top of sewer or a water line. And then, then we have sewer trouble all the time.
Thank you for coming, and just stay tuned with me, Sheila someone.
See what you started, Tom?
We need to work it out.
You handled yourself very well, I think Mick's got a seat open, maybe get one of those, okay? You did a good job.
Yeah.
Well Sheila?
Just want to tell Mike.
What are you going to tell him?
I don't know.
What do you know?
By the audience, I don't know.
What's going on?
Well, as long as the ordinance is in place, Mike needs to continue doing his job.
Okay.
If council wants to change-
Not to do anything, so how is that?
We're not telling him not to do anything, we told him-
In a case like his-
But there's hundreds of those cases, I'm just saying.
Why don't you put it on hold, and we're coming, you know, we're close, these months are flying by, and you're going to have to appoint someone for Mick's spot on this committee, and come the first of the year after the snow's gone, you'll have time to look at things, and if you have to tweak the ordinance, you can.
I'm fine with that.
I understand that we told him to not do it, we just told him that, to pay attention to what's going on, and the committee hopefully will come up to a solution.
What does council think, do you think, if you're going to, I don't get the point, you want Mike to continue on when we're going to, basically you're saying, relook at the ordinance, it's kind of counterproductive.
Maybe it will motivate the council to get the ordinance passed sooner.
It's not passing the ordinance, it's wording it. That's where nobody can agree.
I don't think it's going to hurt a bit to put 90 days, 120 days hold. You're going to have a new person on the committee.
Well, how often does committees change?
Diana points committee to me here.
January, the committees may change or may not.
I'm not offensive, just bringing her to a halt.
We got six of us here, what's the?
Troy, what's the procedure here?
Not to leave it die.
We'd probably have to pass something to-
Stop it.
Suspended, or, I guess the simple thing would be, quite frankly, and then you'd have to, they'd put pressure on to redo it some way, is to vacate the prior ordinance so that there wasn't a sidewalk ordinance. Nothing to enforce, and then start over from scratch.
Well, how many letters did Mike send out? Hundreds?
I think he sent out a lot. I think he sent out a lot.
And your situation, those things, you're gonna have it.
Not really, because a lot of people have fixed them.
I've seen a lot of people working on the sidewalks already.
A guy on Spencerville Street that had the same issue you did and he dug out the root and laid a new con- and put two new slabs. And I didn't see him up here. And I'm not complaining because you're here. I'm not, no way. As a resident, I agree with him though. He stated it's not his fault. He has other things that need to be taken care of at his home. We're not paid a money that we can fix every single thing this year.
You have a year.
Right, but as a new- we just bought a home. It's outdated. It needs updating. Everything in the house needs updating. You sent me a letter that I need to put sidewalk in. It's gonna go to trash.
Well, that's your responsibility when you bought that house.
So I'm just saying, there are priorities for people with families that that sidewalk is not a main priority.
There's some of the sidewalks that are really heated up, not from a tree.
Yeah, that's what we're getting at.
I got a letter. It's just a crack.
Right, but when you made your comment, the guy on Spencerville had the same issue he did.
I did.
And the guy took care of it.
He did.
Okay, so maybe because in a different financial situation, not everybody can take care of this right now.
I think we should move along and, uh, we just need to, uh, slow down, get Mike slowed down a little bit, Kent. And, uh, let's- let's winter through this thing and see if the committee, uh, new committee or existing committee can revamp this thing so we can get into it first of the year, or not first of the year, but construction season starts.
Yes.
So-
I agree with that.
As residents, I would really like you to contact your council members and tell them how you feel on this issue. And call more than one, I would suggest.
And also think about like a quarter percent.
Do it quadrants, maybe over five, ten year period and-
Whatever- whatever it takes to financially get it structured.
Well, you have to do it quadrants.
Right.
So please take the time to contact some council members, let them know your thoughts on the sidewalk.
Good ideas too, that maybe we're not. Don't think of, you know.
Any other committee reports?
I'm not a committee mayor. I'm just myself. But I've been in touch with... No, I can't think of what the name of it is.
Splash pads.
Splash pads, yeah. I've been- been in contact with, uh, one company is Waterworks out of Albany, New York. They are the one that did Hickory Campground. He wants to, I said, "Send me some stuff so I can present it to the full council." Uh, I said, "I don't really have anything that is really gonna do any good to look at." He said, "Why don't we set up a, uh, uh, teleconference and I'll talk to you through the computer and we'll just do a..." And I said, "I don't know if that's possible here." But, uh... He- he was very informative. And, but he doesn't want to strike any numbers. He doesn't want to do anything. He wants to do a site assessment. And he wants to do a feasibility study. And- and, uh, and work out all the numbers to make sure that this thing would even work here. Because he knows about his, because he put it in and he knows about Leo. And, uh, the other two companies that I've got stuff here, and Val, I'd like you to take, uh, one of these packets here with you for your park board. The main thing that I'm getting from these people, of course, I'm asking them a ton of questions and I talked to two little communities down in Southern Ohio where I got a lot of friends and... The thing that we need to look past, past the expense of this water park, is everybody says you gotta fence it. If you don't fence it, they're in there riding their bicycles, motorcycles, take their cars through it. You said you gotta fence it. So there's a fence. Then you have to have somebody there to maintain it. Every once in a while nozzle will plug up from grass or something. You know, somebody's gotta have enough mechanical sense to unscrew that nozzle, get it blowed out, get it back on. You gotta have somebody that's computer savvy because the whole entire thing is done through a computer. You set up the runtimes, uh, you set up which one will come on when you push the start button, where it starts and where it ends, the length of time, so... I couldn't do it.
So we're talking about a lot of money?
Lot of money. And all of them were within five to eight thousand dollars of the figure that I'm gonna give you next and that is, if it has to be a recirculating unit... And I said it does. Uh, even if we had a storm drain, I think we would be foolish. Uh, he's saying that from a small one to a bigger one, you'll go from five, six to ten thousand gallons a day. This town can't be throwing that kind of water away, running it down the drain. Plus, we don't have a drain to do it in. Uh, we do, but it's gonna go straight to the, uh, to the sewer plant. And we don't need that. And so you gotta put in a recirculating unit. Round number, a hundred fifty thousand dollars, just to put the recirculating unit in. And then I talked to Jonathan, I think you've talked with Jonathan.
Play one?
Yeah. And he's- he's the one, and Kent, I think he gave you a, like, a thirty, thirty by thirty area. He gave you something on?
He- Amy was dealing with all these people. I've not talked to any of them.
Uh... And after we talked about it a while, uh, I said, "Well..." And he named four things that it would do. And I said, "So, in essence, if we just hired somebody that needed a job really bad and stood there with a garden hose, it'd be the same effect." And he said, "Pretty much." You know, and that's sixty-some thousand for that, but that's no recycling, so it would be two hundred and ten. And a thirty by thirty, I'm guessing this room is probably like thirty feet long, so just double this room that we're sitting in. That's your thirty by thirty and it's got five things scattered around that'll spray little kids. I will work on this thing as long as you want me to. I will do anything you want me to. But I think that we are spinning our wheels. We're- we're looking at, I mean, by the time you put something in there that would be feasible, fence it, employ somebody, maintain it... And plus all your chemicals because you're gonna have to treat this on a recycle. One thing, you're not gonna need all eight, nine, ten lifeguards, whatever you had, but you're gonna need one or two people down there for supervision, I would think. Your- your maintenance guy and your person and whoever else. I don't see how... When I heard that the pool costs the village thirty thousand dollars a year, they go in the hole thirty thousand. That's just seemed atrocious, but at- when I look at these numbers and the numbers that these people are telling me, we're really getting out cheap. And- and everybody goes, "Well, we need something for the little kids." Well... I grew up down at that swimming pool. Worked for me and- and little kids haven't changed any.
So what was the total cost? Yeah, family fence, everything? Two fifty?
They didn't give me any pricing on fencing and stuff like that. You do the- you do all that. They do not touch it. And, uh-
What do you think they handed out to Bigfoot Creek?
Five hundred. And he did most of the site work and-
Half a million. I know they got a bunch more than we do.
So knowing what you all know, what Ron Beverley just told us, are any of you in favor of continuing, looking into the project more?
This- this one piece, uh, from splash pads, this gives you some... Twelve hundred square foot. And this is fresh flow-through only. Sixty thousand. When we get back in here. And they really, I mean, they don't look like they're... You got one, two, three, you got four things there, five. So forty foot square... Is eighty-two thousand.
With five water features.
Five water features. That's forty by forty. And that- that's small.
Okay.
There's no fencing, there's no recirculating, there's nothing.
Do you mind if I take a question from Mr. Martin?
Yes, as a citizen of the town, I have talked to other people in the tennis community. And their feelings on this, most of them, they're just plain stuff. The money being spent for that splash pad, you put elsewhere in this community, you need stuff done inside the splash pad.
Yeah. Well, when we started out looking at this, we were getting fifty thousand dollars from the state budget and we thought that was gonna go our ways for us. And I think now that we're realizing and having a reality check here. I don't, I haven't heard from anybody that's for doing any more investigating on it.
From a financial standpoint, you knew it was gonna get pricey. Again, do it on the cheap if you're gonna do it.
We appreciate all the work that you put into it, Ron, and-
Well, and I- I'm not- I'm not saying, hey, let's not do this. I'm just saying, uh, you know, from- from the financial aspects of it and... And the down-the-road cost that we're going to incur, it clear that these things don't even talk about.
Yeah.
And don't wanna talk about. Every time I question something, they just go, "We don't do that. That's not our job." It's- it's just gonna be atrocious to have something nice. If you want a little duck waller down there for, uh, well, sixty thousand and then throw on the recirculation for a hundred and fifty and- and probably ten, fifteen thousand dollars worth of fencing and... You know, if you want a quarter million dollars, now Mike could go down there and spray kids with a hose for- for twenty bucks a day, wouldn't you?
Oh, probably less than that.
All right. So-
Well, we just talked about the title. I think that's a priority over this.
I do too.
I would, also, like I said, we've talked a lot about this splash pad and you got a pool down there that has leaks and is old and the pumps are old. I think it's well-used. I, you know, we can't charge an arm and a leg to get used to pool, but I think it's a nice asset for the city to have. But if we're gonna spend that kind of money, maybe take a look down the road. We had a contingency fund. Start that contingency fund again and revamp the whole water park area down there with a new pool and maybe a couple things to add to it. As the other communities-
Took the contingency fund of four, the pool of four hundred fifty thousand, I think it was, just to balance the budget that year.
Right.
Got us through it.
But, um-
All right. Well, thank you, Ron. Appreciate all your work on that. I think that last one-
What are we doing?
I kinda get the impression that people think this is too costly and not a wise way to spend our money.
Val?
I would say we stop. And I agree with Mike. I said this before when we were budgeting, hold on. We need to start that pool contingency back up. And budget some monies every year.
Two hundred and fifty thousand a year?
We were doing fifty thousand a year, yeah. We started out with a nice happy lump sum when we started it and then after we got it, after we started with a few hundred thousand and-
We had about a half million, four hundred fifty. Eighty thousand, I think it was. That we used to got us through the bad times.
And if- if, and I- I discussed pools, uh, with a friend of mine that puts them in in Portsmouth, Ohio and- and, uh, one of the schools down there around Portsmouth, uh, put a pool in. And, uh, I said, "You know, we've got one." I think it was built in either fifty-four or sixty-four. I said, "What would it cost for a pool like that?" And give him a general size. He said, "If you're gonna do a pool," he said, "Don't even look at one unless you got a million dollars." "Don't even think about it."
Yeah.
So- But still, please, Val, take one of these for, you know, further down the road.
I guess the only other thing on that. Should they do some sort of motion or somebody sitting at the head of the table tells the state we don't want their money?
I see that's in our appropriations.
I had put fifty thousand in the budget over and above that, just based on conversations I was hearing. That didn't include the fifty thousand from the, well, the-
Well, if someone wants to make the motion that we're not gonna build a splash pad, like you're pointing at me behind your finger, then-
I'll make the motion that we're not going to make a splash pad and that we should take that fifty he appropriated for one and spend it on sidewalks.
I'll second it.
Okay, drop the sidewalks.
Can I drop in the sidewalk? Hold on.
Our mega motion, we quit discussing splash pads.
I will second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kratsky?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Edley?
Yes.
Beverley?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
I only volunteer to mayor because when I had to turn back CDPG money, I got ripped, let's say, so I'm not doing it with the state. Sorry.
You paid your dues?
Yes.
All right.
You can explain later.
I'll take the heat. Are there any other committee reports of council? Okay, we will go on to the administrator's report, please, Kent.
We still are doing leaves. I'm hoping to end at December ninth if all goes well. I guess I'll wait until we got the Christmas decorations up last week since the weather was nice. I'll get it out of the way. Recycling hours will be switching here to winter hours. The last Monday it's open is gonna be twenty-eight and from December through March, it's gonna be Thursdays, one to six, and Saturdays, nine to one. I've got the septic receiving total in there for the year. We shut down halfway through the year due to the issues with the bugs. That number won't be changing. And Christmas, New Year's trash, I said, I know it sounds early, but I'm already having people asking, Christmas and New Year's will not affect the trash pickup at all. We'll still do it on Tuesday and Wednesday, though. Even though we'll be off on that Monday, it's gonna be a trash Tuesday and Wednesday.
Kent, I would like to say that you and your employees did an excellent job with leaf pickup and I don't think there's anything for the residents to complain about because you guys were hustling every day on the leaves. And the town looks really nice.
Somebody's bored tomorrow on Wednesday. They could use a re- because it's gonna be me and Mike. It's supposed to rain Wednesday, so I wanna try to get as much out of the way as I can.
And I'd also like to remind the residents that there is a metal container at the recycling center that you can take your metals down there. If you don't want a storm in your garage. Anything else, Kent? All right, we will move on to the solicitors' report.
First thing I have is ordinance two thousand sixteen dash fourteen, a third reading by caption only. An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, section one eight, one point zero nine one, granting a filing exemption to retirees and disabled individuals without taxable income and people under EG two.
Is this the same as before?
Okay. Yeah, it's what we basically put back into our ordinance. We had always had that and then we did that major change that the state needed us to. It didn't include this language, so we put it back.
Second. Let's start reading, right?
Yes.
Roll call.
Baker?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Beverley?
Yes.
Edley?
Yes.
Jones? Kratsky?
Yes.
And next is the first reading of ordinance two thousand dash six, two thousand sixteen dash fifteen, by caption only, annual appropriations ordinance of Hicksville Village.
I would prefer that we not pass this all the way tonight. I'd like time for everybody to see what happens here at the end of the year if we-
Two more meetings, so we can do it at the end of the year.
Have to get that- You have to get that, right? Yeah.
We do have two more meetings.
Yeah. Yeah, now, you're talking about who?
I just don't wanna pass all tonight.
Well, no, I want it to pass, you're talking about budgets. Right.
Gotta get that fifty thousand dollars out of there, too. You could put it in the contingency fund. You could put a, set up a contingency fund for the pool, it's moving in.
Well...
Not the, not the grant. No. But the fifty that he put in, that can't put in there, yeah, but not the grant. The grant's gotta go on there. Well, I think that would be a good start.
As long as you have enough people for the last meeting in December to pass it.
Yeah, because it's time to pass it as an emergency.
Yeah.
Well, we, yeah, we could pass it next meeting if we wanted to.
Well, yeah, if you got enough people.
Yeah.
Getting in the time of year, you might...
Is anybody else gonna be missing next meeting except Mick?
I'll be here in front of him.
Okay. I just would rather we not rush it through than we look things over and think about it.
It was fine not passing it tonight, but just don't run out of time at the end of the year.
It deserves about two weeks to look at it. What's council's feelings on setting up a pool contingency fund this year?
Wonderful idea.
Did the finance committee discuss that at all when they made the budget?
But we've already covered for this coming year with his, with his additional budget.
Right.
In a sense, it was already approved for the seventeen budget. We just went from splashing in it to foaming in it.
Well, you just need to let Cheryl know if it's, or she needs, she needs to move it.
So it's a good start, fifty thousand. It's gonna take a long time. I would rock that. Then the next year. You can tweak it.
Um, next would be ordinance two thousand sixteen dash sixteen, first reading by caption only. An ordinance establishing pay ranges for village employees. I'm sure it has this declaring an emergency, but I don't know that we need passive. If, uh, no, this includes the raises that were approved. The other thing that's on there, that I know some emails have been exchanged, there was a Department of Labor decision where they basically bumped up the salary, um, exemptions for people to not have to be paid overtime. And I think we've talked about this before. If people meet a certain test and they're paid over a certain salary, they're exempt from the overtime rules. You're not exempt just because you're a salaried employee. I know we've had that discussion a couple of times. Otherwise, a lot of employers would just make everybody salary and have them work sixty hours a week and, and not pay overtime. And so there is a certain test. Well, the Department of Labor, um, opinion just bumped that up, which becomes effective on December first. And with our pay ranges, the only person that it affects is Cheryl. Um, and I can't remember exactly how much it, do you remember what the figure was, what the difference is? Well, it would've been with just the two percent raise and with the Department of...
It was real close.
Yeah. Several hundred dollars or something, maybe not much. So anyway, the number that's on there for her position is the exemption amount that the Department of Labor. So from her perspective, that would be more than the two percent or three percent raise that was authorized, three percent that was authorized. But the reason for that is to get to that threshold that if she's working overtime, she would qualify for one of the exemptions and wouldn't have to be paid time and a half overtime wages. Um, and she's the only one that that would affect. It actually goes into effect on December first, but she and I had a discussion this morning, and I think the solution to that is she's gonna watch her hours for the next month to make sure she doesn't go over forty hours a week and violate that in any, in any way. You good with that?
How, how will that affect any training opportunities?
Well, once, um, this goes into effect January first, then I'll be fine. Won't be a problem, because I'll be at the threshold.
Okay.
And we kinda talked about it, and thought if it had affected three, four, five, six people, then maybe it would've been appropriate to do something to pass it effective now. But she was willing to keep track of it and control it. So this'll go into effect and start with the first of January, like everyone else.
Sounds good.
So, and then Diane had mentioned Cheryl got a request from Liz Keel at Mommy Valley Planning on behalf of, oh, it's a joint thinking, that's the Steels' five-acre mill. Um, they have a couple of revolving loans with us, and they're evidently doing, uh, some project out there, purchasing some equipment, doing the refinancing. And so what they're doing is, there is a bank that's in front of us on all of that stuff, anyway. They are gonna pay off that bank with a loan from a new bank, and then get additional money to purchase new equipment. That bank is requesting that we subordinate our loan interest to them because once that other bank's paid off, we'll move up to first position when we were only planning on having a second position. I went through, she sent extensive numbers over. She sent like a eighty-page appraisal that the bank had done on equipment and things like that, where it really makes a difference. We have, the two things we have is, we have a hundred thousand dollar loan that looks like it was done in two thousand, February of two thousand twelve, where we had a second on their real estate and on very specific equipment that they purchased at that time. And then there's a loan from two thousand and seven, which, oh, I'm sorry, I got to flip up. Two thousand and seven was the hundred thousand dollar loan. Two thousand twelve, we did an eighty-five thousand dollar loan that was for the specific equipment that we have second position UCCs on, like eight or ten pieces of CNC equipment, things like that, that are very specific. My thought, I don't know what your guys' thought on, the, on the, on the first loan, there's really no reason for us not to subordinate becau, and the total they owe, the two loans originally would total like a hundred and eighty-five thousand, they owe like sixty-three thousand. So they've paid down substantially. The one's been in effect since two thousand and seven, and I think it was a fifteen-year loan, so it's still a little bit of time on that. Um, if we subordinate on that loan, we've never been anything but in second position to the institutional lender on the real estate and on their inventory, equipment, just kind of a general UCC. Um, the one that, I guess, is a little concerning to me is the other one we have on very specific pieces of equipment. We, you know, since, since...
They had several loans.
Since the Beckers purchased it. Right, very good payers, and so, you know, you take that into consideration. The latter said that they're, they've figured, you know, they had figures that the bank was using for how much the real estate is worth and how much the equipment and everything. Um, that I, I think there's more than enough collateral to cover that based upon their payment history, you know, if, and maybe, I don't know, we haven't had this come up before, what role have any of the revolving loan committee plays in it? Because obviously, they're the ones that initiated the decision to grant the loans. But, um, when I spoke to her today, she did indicate that if somebody, myself, Diane, somebody from the council, wants to have like a phone conference or set up a meeting with the people from the bank, they'd be more than happy to sit down with whomever and discuss, you know, where, what numbers they're using and where they think the values of the collateral are in, in trying to help get this done.
I'm not talking about them, but in general. Does anybody ever check and make sure that collateral's still there?
I'm gonna guess and say probably not because not very often do we have these, like, like this one, I looked at it today. It's literally like eight pieces, like, it even describes the serial numbers on some of them. Um, but you'd be familiar in your business, you know, you got, you know, front-end loaders or whatever and everything. Well, most of the time, our UCCs we take are on like all equipment, all inventory, currently owned or hereafter acquired. And so it's kind of a blanket UCC. This, at least off the top of my head, is the only one I could think of that we did the very specific to those things. So I guess the answer to that question is probably not.
Jerry, do you feel the need to jump in on this conversation at all?
No, no.
Okay. Since you're here.
Most revolving loan funds, at least the ones I've, the ones I've experienced with, understand that they're usually gonna be in a second position. So this is a fairly common request. A city of defiance just did a subordination last month. A pretty deal, and fairly common RCIC revolving loan fund. It's just understood that we always have a second position, so, um, that's just my comment.
And I, I agree with that. It isn't, and the question would be is with the, if you thought you were in second position, then there was only, I'll just make up numbers, there was only two hundred thousand dollars in front of ya, then now you're gonna be in second position with four hundred or five hundred thousand. I wouldn't say that's what's happening. Then obviously, it could change your thought process a little bit as to whether or not you still wanna subordinate. Under the circumstances, my, my thought is it's, it's pretty routine. They are paying off that bank that's in front of us now, which basically means they're just substituting the new bank. They are giving them a little more money, but they're purchasing new equipment with that.
And it's my understanding they're not borrowing any more money from us for this expansion.
Right.
But I did send you all an email asking how you would feel about, um, working, uh, possible annexation into this deal. And some of you answered me and said it sounded like a deal. You'll, you'll remember when we first gave, um, the Steels' revolving loan, we kindly suggested they think about annexing into the village, and we've given them, and of course, you know, the Steel family's gone now, and Tim Becker has it. But, um, I believe that Jerry has, um, opened the thought process up to Tim Becker and, uh...
I spoke with Mr. Becker this morning and asked him if that went through. Stump. The conversation basically amounts to, he may need to add fire suppression at his business, and if he does, he may need a larger volume of water line. So Tim, then he could be happy to meet the officials to discuss an annexation application petition.
No, I didn't.
We've got a ten-inch water main, so our supply to him. Now, he might have to do some internal, the size is fire length. But as far as the annexing, nothing's contiguous to him. You'd have to do Mr....
Well, across the road is...
Across the road is, and that, that counts.
It does?
Yeah.
Because they tried to get Schoff to go in, and Giffhorn to go in, and Schoff just, there was no way he was gonna do it.
I think...
I didn't know that.
Well, there's different property owners now, obviously.
Across the road contributes to the perimeter, they, all the properties that are joining...
We still got some odd, odd howlings that, I don't know how it ever came about. I'd hate to add to that.
They, uh, they burn a lot of scrap out there. You've got some hefty fires from time to time, and I don't know what that means. It's had to do with loans. They don't have to be expired.
It's contained, right, in a outside furnace?
They have an outside furnace, but they also have, um, when you're not using the furnace, they still have a lot of scrap. Put it in metal containers, and now they've got a big hole in the corner before they do that.
Pretty good.
So how do we proceed if we wanna subordinate?
Liz, that I would call her to Liz at Mommy Valley Planning, and just let her know, and again, if people wanna think about it more, somebody wants, has questions, I'd be happy to talk to the gentleman from the bank or if somebody else wants to do it. Um, or if, if you guys are in favor of it, then I could, you know, they, they obviously will draft, and I'll review a subordination agreement, and, and we'd have to sign that and approve it and sign it.
Does anyone have more questions about this? Are there any concerns, or can we just have Troy go ahead?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Troy.
Okay. And then, I'm going, Ron, to request another executive session so I could update you on what we talked about last time.
Shall we just...
When we're done, we can do it again.
I digress, but this, um, pay scale, pay range, is there any reason why we can't pass this?
No, I mean, if you want to...
And it's here as an emergency, why don't we just pass it and get it out of the way?
Unless you wanna, we can do it with the budget.
I don't know that it'll matter what number it will be. And if somebody gets sick, it won't be able to be...
Troy, do you have anything else?
No, that's all.
All right. We will go on to the department heads, please, chief. Okay, thank you. Fire chief? Or assistant? Okay. EMS chief?
Just have a couple things, pretty good. Um, Terrence says, Cody and I'd like to come on this on the number eight. Two acquirers, um, new to Hicksville, used EMS equipment. A EMS company that went out of business and donated all their equipment to the state. And I left everybody a list of what we got while we were down there. And then I got saving us eight thousand and hundred and five dollars.
This was all free stuff?
That was all free stuff.
And is it good quality?
Yes.
Great.
Dave Woodring has still out on personal leave. He has suspended that on additional thirty days. Also, Drew Wirt has been released from his duties after missing a hall after the schedule. He was currently in probation for the same offense and has now been terminated. Today, we've had three hundred and sixty-two residents. And I also wanted to bring up that last Wednesday, Cody and Cheryl and I met with a salesman from Medicount who is strictly an EMS billing company. They only bill for EMS services. They don't do any hospital bills, any doctor's offices, anything like that. We were talking with this guy. He thinks that with the numbers we presented to him, he could, if we let their company do our billing by outsourcing, they could give us an additional thirty thousand in revenue. What they charge for this service is based on the amount that they collect for us. He wouldn't, couldn't quote me an exact percentage number. I thought it would be between six and a half and some percent is what they would charge. And this is something that I would like council to consider.
How would they go about doing that? If, if we can't get it collected, how would that...
Because I'm not a certified filler. And the book that you have to go through is just the, and you have to really know your codes. They have certified coders, certified fillers that do everything for them so they can get you the best code to get you the most money the first time around.
I just have a question, Lon, because I did EMS billing for a long time. But because we have just a certain number of, we're billing, billing for mileage, and we're billing for the types of staff we're using, right? Basic, intermediate, paramedics, whatever. We're not billing for supplies.
No.
So what's the secret here? Because I'm curious because, because, and Cheryl, you were billing before her, so what are your... What could they be doing different than what we did?
The only thing you talked about was the coding. I don't know if that's different from what we do.
Okay.
So they're getting insurance companies to pay more?
Right.
For the type of run that you're doing, and the service, the type of a patient is, or...
How much in the red do we run?
Well... Lonnie, I also wanted you to start getting a quarterly EMS billing report to council. Do you remember this?
I thought you might just the collections, I had asked Cheryl for the collections amount.
Seventy-two thousand, separate this year.
How much is uncollected?
Heard in the hall?
No, that's how much we collected.
Oh.
Have you ever seen the quarterly report Cheryl used to give? She can show you what it used to look like, how much we were carrying over from arrears from previous years, uncollected, and, and billed versus unbilled. And then, um, how much we collected, and then how much is uncollected. So... So do you happen to know then, you've collected seventy, how much this, seventy thousand?
No, seventy thousand.
And then how, do you happen to know how much you ought to write off? Because it's a medic, I mean, I say write off, but it's the difference...
They just allow them out?
Yes, they just allow them out.
My guess is gonna be us, I would close the period.
Okay. Yeah, maybe you could do one of those reports and catch up for the year or whatever, and, um, finance committee? Sound good?
Yeah.
We'll send out the finance committee and let them help you out with that decision, all right?
All right.
All right, thank you, Lonnie. Lonnie. Cheryl? Do you report?
Um, I'm very short, I'm gonna have two things. The, I'm gonna get your data cash statement and the act of the year, and the franchise report.
Did the Hicks TV get the franchise report also, the committee? Hicks TV committee? They need the franchise report, too. Okay, all right. Thank you. Anything else? Anybody have any questions for Cheryl? All right. Before we go in to executive session, I'll... Before we go into executive session, I just want to say that, um, the Thanksgiving community service that was held at the Mennonite church last night was very nice. And, um, it was nice of them to host it and nice to see everyone there. The Christ Cup, it sent out an annual appeal. They're trying to collect some funds to, uh, for the Christ Cup ministries to use for their, um, a hundred, estimated a hundred and twenty families that will receive sacks of food at Christmas time in case anybody wants to send a donation their way. December third is going to be the Christmas parade and festivities uptown, put on by the Chamber of Commerce. Congratulations to Nick Prokrosky for, um, becoming our next county commissioner. We will miss you on council, and we thank you for all of your service. We know you're not going to be at the next meeting, but we'll expect you at your last meeting.
I will be.
Okay. And the cruise tour at the fairgrounds is getting all set up. It starts, uh, Friday, the twenty-fifth, after Thanksgiving. And we'll run through December eleventh and end with fireworks, so you'll want to make sure you see that. And Cheryl Smith, you got Hicksville some publicity, uh, last week by getting the Ohio checkbook, um, online with the state auditor's office. And so anyone can go online at any time and see our... Every penny we spent and what we spent up for the last five years. I believe Cheryl, you said that you have not got the two thousand and sixteen information on yet. And, um, and how much we paid different vendors and stuff around town. So, thank you for that. We're the second in the county next to May, so...
Good job.
Yeah, I think that's pretty good. And, um, let's see here. That is everything that I have on my list of things to report. Is there anyone else, uh, here tonight that has anything they want to bring up to council? Thank you for coming. We'll come back to regular session before we close the regular council meeting. So if you want to wait across the hall, yes?
You don't forget, we need to, um, have people apply.
Yes, thank you very much. With Nick leaving the council, as of January first, we'll need a new council member. So if there's anyone in the community that lives in the village limits that's interested in, we've been sitting in Nick's position to fill his unexpired term, you may just drop a letter off at my office and just give us your name and I guess why you're interested in the, in the council seat. And hopefully there'll be a lot of interest.
Through yours.
Through two thousand and nineteen? Okay. Thanks, Cheryl, for reminding me of that. So as I said, you're welcome to wait in across the hall if you want to sit in there and wait. We'll be returning to regular session after our executive session.
Mayor, I'm going to executive session for litigation.
Sure. Roll call, please.
Mayor?
Yes, Beverly.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.